And let's see here. Open Meetings Act is posted on the wall. First thing is the Consent Agenda. All items under the Consent Agenda are considered to be routine by Boswell and will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless a Boswell member so requests. Item A, approve agenda as submitted. Item B, receive and place on file all notices pertaining to this meeting. Item C, receive and place on file all materials having any bearing on this meeting. And item D, approval of minutes of the regular meeting on February 3rd, 2025, as on file in the city clerk's office. Anybody want anything pulled off? Mr. McLean?
I move the items listed on the Consent Agenda to be approved, accepted, and ratified as presented.
Second.
Okay, your vote please. Fairbanks and Barnham. There we go. Okay. That passes eight to the zero.
Nine, zero.
Nine, zero. That's right, I voted. All right. Uh, there's no public hearings or bids. There are a couple of resolutions. The first resolution is number 77, establishing the rate and charges that apply to the use of the solid waste disposal facility.
I move the resolution number 77 to be passed and adopted, sorry. I was sleeping.
Uh, yes, so again, most likely on the city side, we do have a fee resolution for Boswell. As everybody knows, we issued bonds for Boswell here a couple of months ago, about $13.1 million for the construction of the new landfill. That construction is currently underway and happening down the landfill. With those new bonds, we have bond payments that we need to make. Those annual bond payments are roughly $820,000 a year. When looking at what our current bond payments were that have now been paid off, we're looking to increase the Boswell rates to make up for the shortfall that we foresee in those new bond issuances. And so when you do the math, look at how much we have versus how many tons come across the scales, we're looking at about $5 per ton is what we're proposing here for a rate increase at Boswell. These would be effective March 31st. You asked why March 31st? It's a Monday. I didn't really go Tuesday, April 1st. So I just went with March 31st, which is a Monday. Other increases that are in there, roll-off containers go up $1 per cubic yard. We have C and D propose to go up $2 a cubic yard. Brush remains the same except for commercial haulers. So if you bring out a truckload from your house, it remains the same. But if you're a commercial hauler, bring in a dump truck or a side load, those numbers will end up. Asbestos, we're proposing a $2 increase per cubic yard. And then Exhibit A, if you looked at that one, you saw all those numbers changed. We updated that. So those are the fees that communities pay to be part of Boswell. We updated those based upon the last census. And then if you just do the math across, there's why all the numbers changed. I think every town went down except for Cortland went up, I think, a hundred bucks. And Virginia went up about $60. That both had to do with the fact that their populations have increased since the last census. And then outside of that, the last Boswell increase we had was August of 2022.
Ted? Asbestos, help me with that, Tobias. So I thought that was a pretty nominal, small increase. I mean, is that just the same amount of increase or?
It's roughly the same amount of increase. The handling fee for us for Boswell, or excuse me, for asbestos, you have to license asbestos remover, has to put it into special bags, right? Bring it out. We then just have to basically create a little hole in the landfill, bury it, cover it back up, make sure it's on the liner.
Yeah, that's, I, yeah, that was always my understanding. It had to be treated differently and there was more work involved. And that was why I was wondering why that increase wasn't more.
It just, when we look at the number, I mean, it's not one of those, it's a huge one way or the other.
Yeah, I wasn't arguing it. I was just curious about it.
Yeah, I mean, we certainly could look at more, but yeah.
I just thought it would be added work. I've made my point, I guess.
Okay, I've got a question here under the governmental entities. You know, we got the city of Beatrice, county of Gage, Wyomar, Blue Spring, Barnes, and Virginia, Liberty, Philly, and Cortland. All these, uh, all these things are listed. Why is Philly on there when Beatrice is picking, you know, is picking up their garbage when none of the others that we pick up are listed there?
These are all communities that have paid membership to be part of Boswell. This is a carryover from the mid-'90s.
Okay.
We're looking to see what's best moving forward. But right now, that's where they come from. And so these communities in the past have paid to bring their landfill or their trash into Boswell.
But since Mars is picking it up, I don't know why they'd be charged. Like the others, why we aren't charging the other towns then?
That is something we are working on, trying to see how we can correct moving forward.
Okay.
Uh, in the past, Pick Roll was one that sanitary garbage paid their Boswell fee for them. That was part of their agreement. So we've had some odd ones over that, like that in the past. But yes, this is something we have identified that we'd like to take a look at and see how we change this going forward.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Anybody else? From the public? Your vote please. And that passes nine to zero. Resolution number 78, amending a portion of resolution number 71, namely, section 11 thereof, amending the underwrite writer for Piper Sandler and Company to Northland Securities Incorporated.
I move the resolution number 78 to be passed and adopted.
Second.
You do not have deja vu. We did this a couple of weeks ago, but this was our Boswell meeting. When we posted notice in the paper, they had an issue getting it published. And so we can't show an affidavit of publication to the Bond Council, so they asked us to redo that particular resolution. Again, this is where we changed out Piper Sandler and switched over to Northland to issue the bonds for us.
Any discussion needed? Terry?
I just have a question on, what is this? Section 211(c), that last paragraph? I've never seen that before. Taylor, do either one of you guys know why they would have that in there?
I'm looking here.
It's probably been in every bond issue we've done. I mean, I sure don't have a problem with changing to Northland or any of the rest of that. I've just never seen where they can just take our bonds and even as a collateral for a loan for their company.
The way I read this is, yeah, the agency is just looking for various options that they may have when issuing these bonds. I think they're just leaving every opportunity they can have on the table for themselves.
Yeah, I understand that. Yeah. Would you ever had an opportunity to ask them where they really send our bonds? What they do with them?
I have not.
Haven't had it yet? Okay.
No.
It's on your agenda, I know, sometime.
Yeah, I certainly can try to find out where they issued these at.
Yep.
Any more discussion? Okay, your vote please. And that passes nine to zero. Uh, there are no ordinances tonight for Boswell. Public forum, the purpose for the public forum is for the presentation of an item by the general public to Boswell for consideration at a later date. No discussion or action will be taken by Boswell at this time. Anybody here for the public forum? Seeing none, there are no discussions. Mr. McLean, let's adjourn the meeting.
I move the meeting be adjourned at 7:11 PM.
Second.
And that passes nine to zero. Okay. We'll open up the city council meeting. Would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we will note that all council members are present. Um, again, the copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted on the meeting room and accessible to the members of the public. First item that I have, I've got a couple of things ahead of the Consent Agenda. First one is a proclamation for Problem Gambling Awareness Month. Whereas the National Council on Problem Gambling has designated March 2025 as Problem Gambling Awareness Month. And whereas problem gambling is a public health issue affecting millions of Americans of all ages, races, and ethnic backgrounds. And whereas problem gambling has a significant societal and economic cost for individuals, families, businesses, and communities. And whereas problem gambling is treatable and treatment is effective in minimizing this harm to both individuals and society as a whole. And whereas the numerous individuals, professionals, and organizations have dedicated their efforts to the education of the public about problem gambling and the availability and effectiveness of treatment. And whereas the National Council on Problem Gambling invite all residents of Beatrice, Nebraska to participate in Problem Gambling Awareness Month. Now therefore, I, Robert Morgan, Mayor of the City of Beatrice, Nebraska, do proclaim March 2025 as Problem Gambling Awareness Month in the City of Beatrice and encourage all citizens to support the National Council on Problem Gambling in their efforts to migrate gambling-related harm nationwide. Witness my hand and the official seal of the City of Beatrice on the 17th day of March 2025, Robert Morgan, Mayor. And I think somebody's here to accept this. How are you doing?
Good, how are you?
Good, good. Here we go. All right, let me do this. Sure we'll get some pics. And thank you for bringing this to us.
Yeah.
Yeah. You can say something.
If you want.
You don't, you don't have to.
No, you don't have to.
If you want to, here's your shot.
No, I appreciate this. So I'm Justin, the intones at Work with Direction Council Center here in Beatrice. And so I'm a certified disorder of gambling counselor. So we've got an issue here. We appreciate this and like the community support.
Cool.
Thank you. Thanks for being here. And although we don't have a proclamation tonight, but we have in the past, I'd like a gentleman to come up and talk about Down Syndrome. Again, another important issue for a lot of people. And I want to thank you for being here and for your time.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name's Monty Merkel. I live at 7001 West Aspen Road in Claytonia. Was here the last couple of years at this time of year. We've had some proclamations, like you had mentioned. There's a couple of new faces here, so maybe you haven't heard me talk about this subject before. But it's always good to get in front of the local leaders and share information with them. Those of you that were here last year, I remember talking about the colors that are associated with Down Syndrome. And then I encourage you to go home and talk to family members and whatever. And I don't know if anybody caught it, but I said the colors were blue and green. And somebody brought my attention after I left here that I said blue and green. I said, no, I wouldn't say blue and green, it's blue and yellow. I said blue and green. So if any of you went home and shared that information, now you gotta go back home and correct it. But it was an error on my part. But anyway, for today, World Down Syndrome 2025 Day is this Friday, the 21st of March. And the theme this year is selected by the Down Syndrome International Organization. And the theme is improve our support systems. This is where, or excuse me, this year, we're asking everyone to take 21 seconds, this Friday, which is the 21st, and spend it thinking about Down Syndrome. Think about what you already know about Down Syndrome. Think about the person or people that you may know who have Down Syndrome. Maybe think about questions you have about Down Syndrome. Or maybe think about Down Syndrome and how it might affect you. People with Down Syndrome around the world are still treated differently and oftentimes treated poorly. Many are denied a quality education and good healthcare. Now, support comes from many different ways. Some examples are hanging a poster. Several of you have seen the posters we've hung around town. We do that in Claytonia, we do that in Wilbur, and then also with businesses here in Beatrice. Adding a message to a marquee, listening to someone talk about Down Syndrome, which you folks are doing this evening. Advocating for people with Down Syndrome. So those are all ways to show support. But across the globe, organizations and advocates are calling for their governments to improve our support systems. Again, the theme that they're using this year. Paying attention to the policies that affect people with Down Syndrome and the people who care for them is one way governments can improve their support. I think that we're doing a pretty good job here in southeast Nebraska and actually in the U.S. as a whole in comparison to the rest of the world. But as always, there's still room for improvement. So it's something to keep in mind. Again, in the years past, you've noticed I've had my daughter with me. Well, part of gaining independence is gaining a busier schedule. And I did not plan into her schedule soon enough, so she's not here this evening. But one thing she's going to be doing this week on Friday, she'll be going to the middle school over at Wilbur, Claytonia, and speaking to the middle school students for, she'll spend about half the day there talking to six different classes, answering their questions, sharing some of her experience, and so on. I guess the only other thing that's new, I don't believe I mentioned last year, Alzheimer's is something that's becoming more common all the time and is fairly common in folks with Down Syndrome. And so there's a lot of studies being done with these folks to see if we can figure out what's causing some of that and maybe some of the cures for some of that. So I guess, you know, as a dad, as a parent, it's kind of exciting to think that while this sector of our population that we used to kind of set to the side, now we might be looking towards to kind of help the rest of us out. So with that, I appreciate Mayor Morgan giving me the time. I appreciate all the members of the council listening. And as always, I know you can't ask and answer questions during open forum, but I'm not too hard to find either. So if you do have questions, give me a call. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Yeah, thank you.
We will move on to the Consent Agenda. All items under the Consent Agenda are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests. Item A, approve agenda as submitted. Item B, receive and place on file all notices pertaining to this meeting. Item C, receive and place on file all materials having any bearing on this meeting. Item D, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting on March 3rd, 2025, as on file in the city clerk's office. Item E, approval of treasurer's report of claims in the amount of $986,783.14. Approval of Boswell report of claims in the amount of $222,048.82. Approval pay request number two in the amount of $36,000 to Genesis Contracting Group for the Boswell South MSW Landfill Site Entrance Facility Project. Approval of pay request number two in the amount of $137,102.65 to Pruss Excavation for the Boswell South MSW Landfill Phase 1S Project. Resolution number 7512, executing letter agreement amendment number one and any and all other documents necessary between the city and Olson Incorporated to add additional services for the WPC grit improvement project as recommended by the Board of Public Works. Item J, approval number 7513, executing the agreement for professional services, retaining JEO to provide construction, engineering, and inspection services for the Beatrice Lincoln Street Improvement Project as recommended by the Board of Public Works. Resolution number 7514, reappointing Gregory Leach to the Board of Public Works. Item L, resolution number 7515, entering into a hay lease with John M. Zarbinicky. Item M, resolution number 7516, prohibiting parking along the east side of Miller Avenue. Item N, resolution number 7517, entering into a Quonset lease with Freebee Mechanical Incorporated for the purpose of leasing Quonset Number One, located at the municipal, Beatrice Municipal Airport. Anybody want anything pulled off? Seeing none, Mr. McLean?
I move the items listed on the Consent Agenda be approved, accepted, and ratified as presented.
Second.
Your vote please. And that passes eight to zero. Okay, we will move now into the Strategic Planning Retreat Review.
Yeah, hopefully everybody's had a chance to review the strategic plan that was sitting out to you. Again, if everybody remembers, the city council had a retreat back at the very end of January, like the last day or two of January. Then we worked with the individual who helped us with the retreat, put together this presentation that you have before you. A couple of notes, obviously, what we were looking at here was a strategic plan that provides some type of roadmap, helps identify some long-term goals that we can use to establish priorities as we move into our next budget season, which is set to start sooner than we'd like to think. We did not include existing projects in this particular strategic plan. So the CAS initiative, the school site, some of those we did not include in here because they were already ongoing and didn't feel necessary to also include them in here. As part of that retreat, we went through a SWOT analysis of strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. Council went through those, kind of see what they felt was out there. If you look through your presentation, you see that we had a number of strengths. Strengths that you guys had picked out were the park system, our proximity to Lincoln, our department heads, the housing that we have here in the community, the financial stability of the city, and then the vision or planning for the future that we've done already. So those were all strengths that you guys had identified that day. Some weaknesses that we identified were challenges for the code enforcement. Housing was also seen as a weakness, community morale, the comprehensive plan that we have, and our population, all identified as possible weaknesses for our community. Opportunities that were looked at, recycling program, the grant funding, development of a light industrial site, technology and community awareness, were all seen as opportunities. Some threats that were identified include some unfunded mandates, natural disasters, plant closures, all those types of things were seen as possible threats to the city in the future. With all those in mind, our facilitary came up with six kind of strategic goals. Is what she took away is kind of the core reports of what she heard that day. And so you see strategic plan goal number one was to maintain and grow current population to 13,000 people. And then we've kind of put together some of those action items, if you will. But, you know, the first one's kind of find some metrics. What are you going to measure with? And we talked about investment in real residential property opportunities, alignment of code enforcement, and we have to continue to invest in community entertainment. So our parks, our water park, playgrounds, those types of things. Strategic plan number two was support current and future local businesses. So we have to provide opportunities for businesses to open this town. We have to continue to aid the downtown with our storefront improvements. We need to continue to communicate with downtown businesses. And again, that development of a light industrial site was seen as an action item for goal number two. Goal three was maximize communication channels with the community. So we need to work on establishing a strong social media marketing plan, communicating and engaging the community on our projects that we have going on, establish a positive perception of the city. Those were all seen as action items for number three. Goal four, maintain current financial stability. So continue to make sure that everybody up here understands the financial plan that we're working on, establish a cash reserve policy, continue to forecast into the future, eight years, on our capital plans and projects. We see those as kind of the action items, if you will, to continue on working on goal number four. Goal five, maintain current and future community spaces. So install new playgrounds and replace outdated ones. Continue to beef up our surveillance so we can combat vandalism. Hire additional public properties department staff and establish a fund for planting additional trees and begin the planning for a new water park. And then finally, goal number six was develop a connection to Lincoln. So establish a positive and engaging communication strategy, enhance our existing activities that we have down here, our existing organization, or existing events. Market additional ones or new ones as well. And then make Beatrice a destination for Lincoln area residents who want to come down and visit. And then continue to encourage positive conversation when council members and city staff are out in the public. And all of those together, you go to the next page. We talked about how we need to take this and translate this vision and objectives into actual items. And that's the next step as we work through the budgeting process, knowing that these are the priorities to make sure those things are in line as we move forward. So that's kind of what came out of the retreat. I guess I'll turn it over to this body for discussion.
Any discussion?
Pardon me if I'm wrong, but wasn't our goal 15,000 and not 13,000? Just from what I remember, or did you break that up just because we thought that was too big of a number?
What I remember from that, and I have to go back and look at the notes that stuff were taken, but 13,000 is kind of like the shorter term goal, if you will. Long-term, 15,000, but 13 is what we thought we might be able to kind of focus on in the next, those two, five years, in that shorter time period.
Anybody else? Terry?
Let me first thank you guys for doing that, okay? I think everybody around the table enjoyed that whole time that we spent doing that. We had really good discussions. And I appreciate whoever put this composite together from that, from that meeting. I appreciate all their effort in there. I've only had a couple of days to look at it. I don't know if other people have had it longer than that because we didn't have a Thursday meeting this week. And there are, I'll be happy to go through them, but I don't think you want me to. Just go through each one of these things. There's just a number of things there that I would like to see us change the wording on to more motivate people. And I was trying to think before the council meeting, and T, maybe you can help me here, something similar to this was done. And my mind tells me it was 2016. And then we divided it up between the whole community, who was going to do what. And it just didn't get done. And I'd like to see someplace in here that we actually, if these are the goals we're going to have, I'd like to know who the heck's going to do them and how long we're going to do it. And twice a year, once every six months, or at least once a year, we go back and revisit those and see how we're doing. And we actually try to get these things done that we say are important to us. So I just would like us to postpone this for another couple of weeks so all of us have more time to look at this. And I can submit, at least me, I don't know if anybody else has any feelings about this, but at least I can submit some things that I would like to see implemented in this whole plan before it's finalized.
I can answer a couple of those questions.
Yep.
First of all, this is what came out of the retreat. And if we have everybody input different things, we're going to have a complete different project. So we're either going to pass this as it is or vote it down tonight. Secondly, the piece of the puzzle, who does what, certainly will happen. But this is step one. And we need to get step one before we get to step two. And I have total faith that between the council, as from an oversight position, and our city administration, from a management perception, we can do those. I definitely agree, we need to check on these every six months.
So we can't postpone this, is what you're saying?
We're going to vote tonight.
Okay, vote no.
Okay, that's fine. But we're also not going to go through the process of having everybody re-input because that's exactly why we had the meeting and we spent the money on a.
Well, there's a lot of things in here, Bob, that weren't in my notes. And I took some pretty comprehensive notes from that meeting, so.
But you understand that this is from the consultant that we hired. And everybody here had input at that point in time.
Yes, yeah.
So, anyway.
Are you?
Yeah.
I agree with Terry. I stumbled on some of the wording as well. I just, because I'm assuming it's her wording and not ours. So we're a little more used to talking among ourselves. The other, and I wanted to echo part of Terry's comments. His sentiments that I'm that point A to point B guy. I want to know, I know where we're at, we're at point A, but I want to know how to get to point B. And so, you know, it wasn't in this how we were going to do that. And so, and I would have liked to have seen something like that. Yet again, I echo Terry's, we need to address, we need to review this a couple of times a year. And I, and I, so I'm asking you, whose responsibility is that? I mean, is that, is that us, say, hey, it's been six months? Or is that you? Or how do we go about doing that?
Well, I think the first plan is if we adopt this, I think we call upon our city administrator and our department heads of who's going to lead up those projects. And I think that comes back to this meeting as a follow-up. And then I think we just put it on the calendar that we're going to talk about these as an update every six months.
Yeah, well, I, okay, I guess that answered it. So my, I did agree with Terry. I was hoping we could table it just a little bit, just so we could have a conversation about it, you know, break it down and discuss it kind of line by line. You know, either this type of meeting or, you know, smaller groups meetings. But somewhere in here, I would have liked to have seen us, who's responsible for what? Is it, in our past things, that these are the council's issues? These are Tobias and management's issues? These are department head issues? And so I would have liked to have seen that in there, so.
We can come back, we will come back with that.
Okay.
This is the first step.
So you're just essentially telling me that this is a framework?
Correct.
And we're, this is your, this is the title page and we're going to work off of that?
This is the 3,000-foot view.
Okay.
Then we boil it down to a lower view.
So we're also stuck with the terminology that's in here?
Yes.
Bob, do you really want this terminology in there? Have you read this page by page?
Especially under community morale.
Especially under community morale.
I, I think the hard part of it is, is we all agreed to pay for somebody to run the show. She put it in her words. There's going to be a difference of opinion that you might have, Dwayne, than Terry. So we're going to rehash everything, trying to put it back into a different perspective. And we all have different perspectives, and that ultimately changes the entire day. Otherwise, we shouldn't have gone through that process.
That's what I was going to say, what do we spend our time up there for? If we do, it's a framework, Terry. It'll matter to me either way, I guess, I'll vote for this, but we just created a framework, and from there, I think we can expand on that and decide who's going to be in charge of what.
I don't have any problem with that. I just have, my biggest problem is the language that's used in here. It's not motivational language, and I'm not sure I even want to read it, but I don't like the way it's written, and I don't like what it says about the city councilman, I don't like what it says about the community, either one of those things. So I'd like to have those things out of there before it goes, we're stuck with it for perpetuity. But I guess everybody has their own opinion.
There's no way we can edit any of that out there?
Well, I think it defeats the purpose, quite honestly. I mean, you know, if, if indeed you don't like the document, we can start over and have our own, but you got to understand that your opinion's going to be different than my opinion, than Gary's opinion. And so if this isn't written in the quite right language, I really don't think it is at least my role, or Tobias's role, or the council's role to rewrite something, because they don't think that came out the way they want it. Because then you're defeating the whole purpose of the meeting.
See, I think that's definitely our role. I do. I definitely, before we adopt, adopt a strategic plan for the community for the next three or four years, I think it should be reflective of exactly what we feel, and I'm not crazy about the way this is written, I'm just not, but there's a number of corrections I'd be doing something different.
So you want to open it up and have another retreat and redo it?
No, I just, what I always said was postpone, I'd like to postpone it two weeks, and we have, we have one of our meetings together, and we talk about these different things.
It'd be a council meeting with all members present. Otherwise, it'd just be the four people there's opinion.
It's one from each ward.
But I mean, but it's still, we got members of the council. I mean, it's, everyone's going to have-
Michael, I know how this works. I understand how the whole thing works.
We'll have to redo everything, it just-
Okay, so you guys want, under community morale, you want citizens against virtually everything, AKA cave people. Number two, increased division and rise of tribalism, banding together as groups. Number three, lack of unified support and positive communication from all council members. I don't think that does a lot for community morale, I really don't, and that's the heading. And that's just one area.
But that was discussed there, those points brought up on sticky notes.
It was also discussed by one person.
Yeah, but I mean, I'm just, I'm just saying, they were-
I mean, one person said something about a cave designation, it wasn't 20 of us.
But I don't know how to change that. And what I'm saying is, I also want to be transparent. Those were the conversations. I don't know how you change the conversations to what you want after having a consultant do the work. I don't get that.
I, you know-
I don't know how to do that.
Consultants are fine, I mean, they're fine, but she doesn't live here, and this is supposed to be a motivational thing for our community too, and a strategic plan for the whole city council and the city administration, and that's just one, I mean, there's just a number of things in here.
You know what, and I'm fine if it doesn't pass. I'm 100% fine if-
I just don't know why we can't table it, not table it, why we can't postpone it.
Because if you're going to rewrite it, and that's basically what you're saying, if you're going to rewrite it, let's start over. And then let's put on the board where our goals and our motivation is going to be, and then whatever that comes out, we're going to be transparent again. Otherwise, we're going to be in the same boat where somebody doesn't like word, this word or this statement, because there's nine different opinions up here. So if you want to start over, I have no problem with that. I'm just saying that-
There was also a number of things that were, we discussed at that meeting that didn't make it in here.
That may be.
Well, I guarantee it was. I just don't know why we have to try to shove this through, I really don't.
We don't.
But you can do whatever you want. But if we got to vote this up or down tonight, I'm not voting in favor of it.
And that's okay.
Yep.
If we have to start over, I don't expect anybody to vote that way. I, that's fine.
I'm not saying to start over. 90% of this is probably just fine with everybody around this table, but there's a number of things here that-
That bother you.
Bother more than me.
Well, that's okay, but as, right now, it bothers you.
I just wanted the language.
Yep. I mean, most of this is like Ted just said, most of it's language, but-
Terry, I know how motivated you are for what we talked about up there, and I think we all were motivated as much as you. I don't know if putting in a document a little different makes, our motivation as a council, I think, has been really good. And you've been a leader of the motivation, and as we all have contributed to that. So I don't know if changing a few words will make us more or less motivated, but I know you're motivated for our community, and I think everybody up here is too.
Trying to be, just, I just don't feel comfortable with the plan, the way it's written, that's all. And the way it speaks about the community and the way it speaks about the individual councilman, I'm not crazy about that terminology at all. But you do what you want. I'm done.
Bob?
Yeah.
Some of the language seemed harsh for a public document. We had, were very honest when we were having our conversation, but I don't necessarily feel that everything we said should be in a public document, actually. That was one of the reasons why we could be maybe a little more honest. So that's one thing. One of the things that kind of drives me crazy from this body and has for some time is this idea that every time, the first time we see something, in two days, we have to vote it up or down. I saw this for the first time Saturday, when I opened my packet, and basically, but there's a whole bunch of things that I saw for the first time on Saturday when I opened my packet, and at least one I'm going to vote against tonight, because we haven't had time to look at it, and we haven't given the public time to look at it. So I really don't see, I don't, I don't know that anything will change in two weeks, but it does give us all a chance to digest it a little bit more. And I thought she did a very good job. And, you know, when you look at those boards and you can't figure out how that's all going to come together, and something that makes sense, and it does make sense, but I would agree that, that some of that is harsher than it should be in a public document.
My only response is that was a public meeting. That was-
Sure, but if the, of course it was.
And I guess, I go back to my same point, you know, so let me ask you this. Had we changed the language, say, I edited and changed the language, would that have been the right thing to do?
And be deceptive.
I mean, to me, transparency's a big thing. And, you know, I wish that she would put things differently, but we all knew what we were doing when we did that. And in this document, and I totally get it, this is a document we're going to drive at least the next two years on. And if we don't agree on this document, then we probably ought to start over. Because if I make an edit, and you make an edit, and Dwayne makes an edit, we may not agree on that same edit. So how do we get back to that same commonality? We can't.
I don't think Terry is disagreeing about, say, the community morale, the big picture. I think it's how we explain what we mean by that. And I think we all kind of check our language and how we say things, you know, sometimes from what we're thinking in our head, and how we write and all of that, when we're writing whatever, we're writing papers or whatever, a column or whatever. You say the same thing, you just do it in maybe some different words. And I think that's probably what Terry is saying, is that we could maybe use some different words, but still say the same thing. I agree, you can look at it both ways. This is what we said. Would we have said different things had there been other people in the room? Yo, you betcha.
Don't speak for everybody, you can't do that.
You would have maybe not, would, I don't know. I'm not going to ask for a show of hands, but I think some of us maybe would have put things different.
You know, same way, I like this wording, I mean, like with that number one, under community morale, if it just said citizens against virtually everything, that's it. Not putting AKA cave people, it's like we're calling the citizens of Beatrice cave people. You know, and I know somebody said it, but it still could have said citizens against virtually everything.
And I understand that, I really do. And quite honestly, not a great comment, not appropriate comment.
No, it was not.
But, you know, I, so let's say that we have everybody here submit changes they want to see. Do you want me to make the decision what goes in there or not? I mean, I can, but then I think that somewhat changes and alters the document. Do you not agree?
My request was to alter the document, yes.
But if you submit something and I don't like it and doesn't go in there?
So if-
Is that where, is that where you want to be?
I don't know, just take that one section that I read, okay? I think we could come up with different language in that and say exactly the same thing, ask it, and just bring it up, and put it in front of the people and say, vote on it, yes or no. I'm not saying there's 25 things in there, Bob, that need to be changed, but I just, there's at least three or four that I just believe are what was not the intent of that meeting, and I think it's going to come out differently than what we intended, just because of the way it was worded, and we didn't word it that way, she did, so.
But do we alter what we say at a council meeting? Because that was a meeting. Everybody hears what we say, do we alter what we said and change what the truth is? I don't know.
Well, here's what I'm going to do. I'm going to pull it off. We may or may not vote on it, it may or may not come back. I need to think about it. So it's going to be pulled off, and Tobias and I will discuss how we want to move forward, and a strategic plan might not come back.
Well, I hope it would come back sometime.
So, discussion's over. All right. So we'll scratch that one, and I will give that some consideration. Public hearings and bids, there are none, so we'll move into resolutions. Resolution number 7519, executing the amendments to loan agreements, promissory notes, personal guarantees, and deed of trust between the city and some recipients for an additional direct loan in the following amounts from the city's CDBG Downtown Revitalization Grant 21-DTR-004.
I move that resolution number 7519 be passed and adopted.
Second.
As with most of our downtown revitalization grants, well, this would be number two of two that we've received, we end up with extra funds at the end of it that we then reallocate back out. So in this particular case, we have a $42,800 that we're reallocating to individuals. These dollars come from either individuals who did not do their projects or came in under budget. And so we are then reallocating these $42,000 to seven different applicants. Those applicants received it because they came in over budget, so obviously, if you came in under budget, I can't give you additional grant dollars, because there's limitations on how many grant funds you can receive as a percentage of your project. And so all of the documents you see are in the packet, I think they're all listed on the page two of the resolution. I think they've all signed all their agreements already. These are all the same terms as their original loan agreement. So again, five years, it's forgivable as long as they keep the improvements, we set up as forgivable loans, we'll go back to the original time period when they started, so they don't get a new time period for this dollar, so it all goes back retroactively to the first grant application. That date will be what we use moving forward.
Discussion.
The only thing I wanted to add, Bob, it's just been a great program, and we need to echo that a little bit.
Yep, absolutely.
And we started out, the first time we ran this, we got no, we got nobody bit, and now, how long's our waiting list?
It's significant, yes.
We oversubscribed.
Yeah, yeah, so, great project.
Yeah, it has been, good point. Anything else? All right, your vote, please. And that passes eight to zero. All right, a resolution number 7520, executing the general lease of the Gage Area Growth Enterprise Engage, rare earth salt separation and refining LLC LB840 loan, forgiving phase one of the LB840 loan, and terminating the remainder of the LB840 agreement.
I move that resolution number 7520 be passed and adopted.
Second.
So in January of 2015, city council entered into a loan agreement with Engage for the benefit of rare earth salts, and it's 2015, there was a typo, thank you for picking that out. We call it Project Jobs, there were three phases, only phase one ever moved through fruition. That counted for $100,000 to be given back to rare earth salts. The loan agreements indicated that if they were in business in C. Beatrice for 10 years, the loan would be forgiven. It's now been 10 years, rare earth salts is still in business, they're still looking in C. Beatrice, and so that's why we brought before you tonight, to consider that portion of the loan forgiven and terminated. The phases two and three, they've never moved forward with those, again, you have to go back 10 years in time to know the history on those two particular phases, but we're just saying we'll just continue to terminate those two, since they did not happen at that time, and we'll close this loan agreement out.
Any discussion?
Seeing none, your vote, please. And that passes eight, zero.
Tobias, I voted against that 10 years ago.
Resolution number 7521, authorizing the submission of a rural business development opportunity grant, application to the United States Department of Agriculture, and committing matching funds for the downtown Beatrice Strategic Planning Initiative.
I move the resolution number 7521 be passed and adopted.
Second.
This is another item where you do not have deja vu, we talked about this before. This is our USDA grant that we have applied for through Merchant McIntyre for help us with a downtown strategic plan, and kind of some feasibility studies as to what businesses to recruit to the downtown with the cast initiative and post-cast initiative. After we submitted the application, USDA came back and said, well, can you give us a resolution saying that you're okay with applying for the grants? Said yes. So that's why we're back before you tonight for a resolution from this body, saying yes, we want to proceed with this grant application. Again, it's about a $65,000 project, what we put in the grant budget, and are the city's cash match on it, would be just short of $10,000.
Any more discussion needed?
Just, go ahead. Well, I was just going to ask a question, do you, have you gotten any feedback? Do we get a decent shot at this? Because I think this is a great idea, I really do.
You know, we, we talked to the local rep several times before we submitted the application. I mean, I would assume that if it wasn't a good application, it would-
Wouldn't have done that.
-not to write the application, so, I mean, those were positive conversations that we had.
Good. How about timeline?
I don't know for sure when they'd look to announce, I don't know that.
Yeah, I was going to ask the same question about the timeline, but the other thing I was going to ask is, is this a footnote that we should have going forward? Should we always have a resolution when we're making grant applications for these things? I mean, did they give you an indication, or is that just specific to this, this grant?
This is the only one that's ever asked.
I don't know if that would hurt to add that in the bottom of the pile, I did, but instead of having it come back.
Right. Yeah, if we have time, we can certainly look at getting an application, sometimes the turnaround time just doesn't be feasible. Obviously, on the cast initiative, we had, you know, some resolutions to let people know that we're supporting that one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I'd just like us to see us, I'd just like to see us do that. I'd hate to have our application move to the bottom of the pile while they're waiting for our resolution, so.
Anybody else? Your vote, please. That passes eight to zero. All right, let's see here. Item E, resolution number 7522, declaring the mayor and city council support for converting Sixth Street, AKA Highway 77, from four lanes to three lanes from Dorsey Street to Mulberry Avenue, to improve safety for the vehicular traffic and pedestrians.
I move that resolution number 7522 be passed and adopted.
Second.
So everybody was here last week, or two weeks ago, when we had J. O. come down and present to us about our Stay Streets For All grant that we had done. We had adopted the Safety Action Plan at that last meeting- And in there, everybody recalled that the number one project in the Safety Action Plan was for converting Highway 77 from four lanes to three lanes from Dorsey Street to Mulberry Avenue. Mulberry Avenue being the southern border of the C. Beatrice. And so as JEO indicated, this particular change would address five of the top six high injury network intersections in our community. There's a lot of statistics in this. If you want to read through it, but it talks about, again, types of accidents and severity of accidents. All that stuff goes into those calculations. But at the end of the day, this was what came out of the Safety Action Plan. Nebraska Department of Transportation is looking at a 2028 Mill and Overlay project through the C. Beatrice. And as part of that, we've had some conversations with them. They reached out and said, if you're looking to make that change, that would be the best time to do it, is after we did the Mill and Overlay project. And so they came back and said, if you're, if the city's interested, they requested some type of resolution from this body indicating support for making the change from four lanes to three lanes. And so that's why we brought it before you tonight.
Yes, I'd like to add, Tobias, the Highway Committee made up of three members of the council and Jason Moore and James Burrows and yourself. And the police, we all looked at this on a couple of different occasions and we all recommend passing of this resolution. The safety of the citizens was a big factor at our decision. When you look at severity of the accidents, and a lot of the accidents happens with cars are trying to turn left across two lanes of traffic. And as they pointed out, a lot of times, even though it's four lanes, the middle two lanes are always stopped for traffic. Cars, it's functioning as a three-lane highway basically now anyway. And if you look at a lot of the severe accidents that happened there, and then also the pedestrian traffic, it's very dangerous through there. And the traffic, vehicle counts, I believe, are 6,000 to 14,000 a day right now through that corridor, depending on the week, day of the week. And Nebraska Department of Transportation said daily counts could go up to around 20,000 is what that would handle. Like I say, stress, this is three years out, so how it's going to look, it all has to be designed. Jason and his guys and James, it'll be a lot of work with the department, you know, where turn lanes, what trap lane goes through. With the reroute downtown, stoplights are going to change. Like I say, what a stress, what if this or that, we don't know any of that till we. I'm sure that'll come back for the council three years from now when you have a chance. But like I say, we don't know what it's going to look like exactly, so those are part of the equation. Doesn't need to be part of it. It's for the safety of the communities what our thoughts were, so.
So as part of what they suggested was actually moving sidewalks and all of that.
So that would be the, the long-term project, if you will, is to move the, the curb and gutter, the curb and gutter out into the streets. But originally, it would be designed like West Court Street, where the, the curbs stay where they're at. The lanes simply get repainted. The cost estimate for redoing the curb and sidewalks and all that from Dorsey Street down to Mulberry is somewhere in that $35 to $40 million range.
Right. I have that right here, which I think seems kind of cost prohibitive. But the other thing they did say, though, was don't just paint, repaint lines. That that's what communities kind of fall into a trap a little bit. And that is not the way to approach it, that, I'm assuming maybe the state can help us with that. Or maybe we have to go back to JEO and say, okay, now how do we do this so we don't have the mess that we had before? So we are successful.
Yeah, we want to do it right.
Right, exactly. So we are successful.
We have time to do it right here. We want to make sure.
Right, yeah, exactly. Okay, so the sidewalk thing is maybe a long-term plan, but isn't, that's not what we're saying tonight.
Correct.
Okay.
And I might point out that this is, this is a recommendation.
Sure.
And the state of Nebraska will make the decision that they choose. Other discussion up here before I turn it over to Mr. Nelson. I think you have something to say.
Tobias, there's, there's a money equation here, too, that we ought to at least test base on, shouldn't we?
Yes, there is a, a financial part to this, this equation. So the Department of Transportation has a very old memo. That's their rule, their policy, that indicates essentially that if a highway comes into your community and changes the number of lanes, the city's then responsible for the cost. So Highway 136 comes in two lanes, goes out of town two lanes, so we don't pay anything on Highway 136. Highway 77 comes in four lanes and goes out south two lanes. And so the state says you're responsible for half the cost of repairing Highway 77 through town. So if you will remember in 2018, the state came in and redid some work from Industrial Row north out to the, the northern boundary line. The city then was responsible for about one and a half million dollars of that cost. This time, if they're looking at going from Dorsey Street south down to Mulberry Avenue, including the South Sixth Street Bridge, the first cost estimate that the state provided for our share is $6.1 million if we leave it at four lanes. If it goes to three lanes, then their memo, right, their policy changes. We fall into a different category and our cost share would go to half a million dollars.
That's worth a little bit of pain and suffering and wait aters traffic light. To me, anyway. Six million seems like a fair number.
I think Mike put it really well. It, it has to do with safety. When it boils down to it, it's all about the safety of it. What I, what I'd like to stress again is this, it's not really our highway. It's not our street. It's their highway. And so you're a little bit at their mercy, but got to figure all of it in. But I, I wanted to, I want to chime in. Thank you for doing that, Mike. Appreciate it.
Any other discussion up here before we go?
Just real quick here, just so, you know, I have it in straight in my mind here. So basically, what we're asking to approve is to go ahead and say the state were, you know, open to changing it to a three-lane. Are we saying we want it to be, you know?
So when we met with the state, and we being James Burrows and I, we met with the state as we're going through the Safety Action Plan, because all the signs indicated that this was going to come out as one of the priorities, but we want to make sure the state was something that they were going to support and not just say, heck no, we're not doing that. When meeting with the state, they were very supportive of the plan. They had been wanting to change to three lanes for some time and felt the city was not supportive. And so they want to make sure that we're supportive of the change to three lanes before they move forward with their design work.
Name and address?
James Nelson, 1025 North Sixth Street. Mr. Mayor, I appreciate you at least giving the public the opportunity to address this resolution, unlike the last four. I think that's probably protocol, isn't it, to ask if there's any public input, even though I'm the only one here? I looked through this study. And if this is all about safety, in the Sixth Street from Dorsey to Mulberry, if it's all about pedestrian safety, there were six in this 10-year period. And the ending of this period was five years ago, if I've read this right. There were six pedestrians involved in an accident. Only two out of those six were at intersections. And also from your study, of the total nine pedestrian, because there were some outside of Sixth Street, two-thirds, the contributing factor was the lighting condition. They were in what they call a reduced light conditions. So perhaps if you want safety for pedestrians, you ought to check your street lights. For some of you looking around, maybe two of you might recall this was a three-lane highway before. Anybody recall that? And I don't know where you got the expert here that says taking four lanes of highway traffic, reducing it down to two lanes with a turn lane makes it safer. But I would guess if that's coming from the state of Nebraska, you go back to the expert from 30 years ago that said it was safer to put four lanes rather than two. So maybe we ought to shop for a different expert if you're talking safety. I think if you read this, the majority of accidents are angle accidents, which would be people turning. And when you put two lanes of traffic into one lane of traffic, you're going to increase those. I mean, it's just common sense. You're going to put two lanes of traffic into one lane of traffic and people are going to still try and turn across that traffic. How many blocks get backed up when you have one lane of traffic on Sixth Street? I think one of you might recall that it sometimes during certain times of the day backs traffic up for two to three blocks. I don't know who came up with this, quite frankly, in my view, harebrained idea. But start using some common sense. Why do we have four lanes past Walmart? There's more traffic in downtown Beatrice than there are just driving past Walmart. It's safer. And if you want to get the sidewalks off the curb, move them off the curb. If you want to spend $30 million to move the curbs in, you're going to be stuck with that rest of our lives sitting around here. And when that doesn't work, how much is it going to take to put those curbs back to where they were? I made three different stops between lunch and here and probably spoke to 34 to 38 people and asked them what they thought of this. I would say 90% of them said, responded with, whose stupid idea was this? Another 10% probably sat there and went, I can't believe it. I did not have one single person think that this was a good idea or even worth thinking about. With all due respect to whoever's sitting on this Highway Committee, I think you ought to recall the problems we had when it was less traffic going down Highway 77 than what there is now. And if you'll see in the, one of these studies, I think you're one from a year ago, the anticipated increase in traffic is a half a percent per year on 77. So I just think it's something you ought to be opposed to. Start using some common sense.
Thank you.
Sort of along the same lines that he was just saying, I had somebody call me today about this, too. And they said also about being backed up for, you know, like two blocks during, you know, rush hour, trying to get, you know, turning and, and things like this. And they, they asked me to, you know, vote against it tonight. I wasn't here at that time. I, you know, so I don't know how well it worked. I know Court Street works very well, but I know it's got a heck of a lot less traffic on it. But I just wanted to say that I, you know, had a person call me and, and said that they were, you know, so.
Tobias, give us the numbers again. Six and a half million or half million?
$6.1 million is their initial estimate for our share.
And if we change it to three lanes, it's...
Their initial estimate's half a million dollars.
Again, for me, that swings it. Even if you, the safety swings, I mean, and the study was very interesting. So safety is number one. But bottom line is, I don't want the city to have to spend close to $6 million because we don't want to be backed up at lights.
Dan, I just wanted to, you didn't finish your question. You didn't ask, do you have $6.1 million or do you have a half a million dollars? I, I, I agree, so.
Sure, let's ask that.
Well, you, you didn't finish. So I was, so I was letting you help. I was helping you there. I, I, I agree that, I'm going to reiterate, this is not our highway. It belongs to the state of Nebraska. They're dictating this to us. We have a few choices, both of them not very good. We have a couple of choices, both of them not very good, for the convenience of it. And, and I, I was, I obviously was not here in, when this happened because I don't remember. I would have remembered being backed up. I know you keep telling me I was here, but I would have remembered that. The, the thing of it is, it's, it's a, it's two, three times a day. And you're talking about an inconvenience of three or four minutes. Yeah, we're, we live in a relatively small community that you can get across town pretty quickly. And, you know, Lord knows being inconvenienced for an additional three or four minutes a day because you didn't want to spend $5.1 million, you know, Katie Barthador. So I, I think you'd, you'd fill the room if you said you were going to do that. But, but yeah, please answer the rest of the question, Tobias. The difference between, do we have, do we have $6.1 million? Do we have a half a million dollars?
So since this is a street project, it would come out of the street department. The street department has an average annual budget of roughly $2,000 to $2,500 million. So you figure a $6 million project, you're talking about every dollar the street department has for three years. Currently in their cash reserves, they have $3 million. And remember, we have some of that for the project we added in this year, which is Lincoln Street from 25th to 27th. So the short answer is no.
I do think it's important to answer one of Mr. Nelson's questions. The report was not done by the state. The report was done by an engineer from JEO. So I just wanted to clarify that for you. May, may, may not make a difference, but that's who did the report. And I know he has the expertise in that area. So just want to point that out. Any more discussion?
This one, Bob. This one I am voting for, okay? I was here and when all that other was going on and having me back up into Ellis Street and whatever, and, and I had that same fear in my gut. And I also have a fear that if we do this, that Seventh Street all of a sudden becomes a much faster street where, whether we want it to or not. But this is 2028. We don't know how it's going to relate to the whole downtown renovation project. And $6 million is a lot of money to our budget, so I'm voting in favor of it.
Did I hear correctly that the long term is then to move the curbs in?
That's an idea.
And what was the cost of doing that?
$30 million to $40.
$30 million. Do you have $30 million in the budget?
That would have to be a grant.
Do the taxpayers have $30 million to move the curbs in? So I think you're being pretty short-sighted to go, oh, we're going to move those sidewalks. We're going to move the curbs in. We're going to be stuck with it and we're going to spend $30 million.
I think that that's, one of the questions I asked was, were we saying yes to that? And you had said no. Right, we aren't saying yes to that part of it.
When the committee looked at, that was just a perfect, if we had all the money in the world, it would be great to do that. We do not. It's just an idea.
Right.
Any more discussion anywhere? All right, your vote, please. And that passes seven to one. Move on to Resolution Number 7523, establishing various fees.
I move the resolution number 7523 be passed and adopted.
Second.
So again, we, we bring up fee resolution. Every budget time, every time we change some fees in there, we've got a number of changes. You should have redlined copy. I'll hit some of the highlights that are in there. The, the two that'll probably be of most interest to people are the water park fees. And so we are proposing an increase of $7 for the seasonal water passes this year. Not the daily rates. The daily rates remain unchanged, but for the seasonal passes, we did have an increase in 2024 of $3. Remember, the thing that gets the water park the most is the increase in minimum wage. Not that we're subject to it, but we are recruiting the same high school kids largely are who our lifeguards are. And so that, that rate increase does impact us there.
Bob, what does that add to our overall income models? If, if we adopt that based on the average of what the last couple of years was or...
At, at the water park?
Yeah. How much will that increase them? How much money?
How much additional revenue will we generate? How much additional revenue will we generate? I don't know off the top of my head what that number is.
That's all right. They don't need to know. I just wonder how much.
I'm sorry. I don't have that one. The other increase that's in there are obviously, we talked earlier tonight, we increased the Baswa rate. And so that, that cost per ton, if it goes up, obviously people who go across the scales now have to pay additional money. And so what we're proposing for Mars is an increase in your residential rate of one dollar per month. There are some increases for commercials, a little harder to kind of give you a generic number because everybody has different sizes of containers, everybody has them picked up different times. But for residential, if you recall, we had an increase of two dollars back in September of two thousand twenty-two. And for commercials, it would be the first rate increase since we took over in April of two thousand twenty-one. There are some other rate increases in here. Happy to kind of touch on them if you're, you're interested in it. But those were kind of the two that I figured would probably have the most questions or concerns amongst this board.
I know I'm going to take at least one phone call over the dollar rate increase. When are we going to own this? When are we debt free on this? Because I, I've told, because the explanation is, when we own this, when it's debt free, it's, it generates. And when it generates, and just like the electoral department, we haven't raised fees in the electoral department for eight years. And so I, I foresee that these rates being held very steady for a very long time, once we own it. So when is that again?
Twenty thirty.
Twenty thirty, okay.
Okay, so we're talking about raising the garbage rates one dollar. What happens to the ones that we have the contract to? I mean, I think, you know, here a couple of years ago, Gary put a pretty, you know, that he, you know, said we shouldn't raise our rates until everybody's up there equal to us. And I, I totally agree with that, you know, so. And I know, you know, with things going up with the things. But is there going to be any rate increases that we're going to be able to get these other, you know, towns up closer to us, you know? Because they're, you know, I mean, obviously, you know, you say that countries, you know, but we have people outside Beatrice that pay the twenty-three. I mean, are their rates going to go up too?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Their rates would go up as well. They would go up from twenty-three to twenty-four, so they'd also experience a dollar. Those come villages that we have under contract are what you're asking about. Those that we can't increase will also be increased the, the like amount. Those generally go out this March, April time period, and so they'll be notified as well. As you've indicated in previous meetings, there are some contracts that we can't increase. Either because we just signed the contracts, and so we said we'd hold their, their rates firm for a year, or because we provided them some length of time before we have additional rate increases. Those obviously we can't increase because of contractual terms, but all others would seem alike increase.
Okay, so you're saying that we're just going to increase them like a dollar? I mean, so we wouldn't increase them like a buck and a half, try to get them up closer to us since we have, you know?
We, we were indicating to do a dollar. If this body wishes us to do more than that, just let us know and we can notify those communities.
Well, my, my opinion is, you know, that I think, you know, that they should get closer to what we're paying here in town. But I don't know if the rest of council agrees with that.
Other discussion?
I do not, still do not understand why if you need to get a second dump, say, on a downtown commercial dumpster, it costs seventy-five dollars. Can someone please tell me why it's that high? Under sanitary garbage, it is about twenty-five, I believe. Not saying it should be that low, maybe thirty or thirty-five, so that it still costs some money to have that done, but not something somebody wants to have a second pickup every week to do because it would cost, you know, well over a hundred dollars. So I'm asking if maybe we can look at that. I realize that's not a tonight issue. But if we could really look at that and see why is it that high? It doesn't seem to be kind of a fair rate.
Right. And you and I had a good conversation about that. I think we both had some good points there. I told you, I'll talk to Kerry.
Yes, if you would do that, I would appreciate it. And then the other thing is, is this is my no vote for tonight. And the only reason why is because we have not given the public any time to look at this. I, again, I opened it on Saturday and looked at it. I don't think it's even, is it available to the public? Can they go on the website and see this document? This red line, this new one?
I don't know if a red line would be available on the website, but I think the.
The proposed new one is? I don't think anybody's going to call us and say, yay, go ahead, raise our garbage rates. But I do think we should offer them an opportunity to complain to us about them and/or come here and speak their mind. And this is just something that, again, it's, they're, they're fair increases. I, I don't have a problem with the increases. But I do think we should give the public an opportunity to speak before we vote.
Anybody from the public? Seeing none, your vote, please. And that passes six to two. And that ends the resolutions. We're going to move on to the ordinances. The first ordinance is amending section two dash fifty-eight of the Beatrice City Code regarding the time at which regular city council meetings are to be held.
I move that said ordinance be given number twenty-five dash five. The title thereof be approved, the rules be suspended, and the said ordinance be read by number only three times tonight.
Second.
Motion to suspend the rules is not debatable. I was getting tied up because I heard a sidebar conversation over there, and these mics pick everything up. And that passes. Ordinance number twenty-five dash five by number the first time, twenty-five dash five the second, and twenty-five dash five the third and final time.
I move that ordinance number twenty-five dash five be passed and approved.
Second.
So this ordinance would change what time we start our city council meetings. Doing a little research, so in nineteen ninety-nine, this body passed a change to this ordinance so that at seven thirty PM during daylight savings time, you would have your meeting start. And then the next year in two thousand, you got rid of that and went back to seven o'clock all the time, year round. So it's been unchanged for twenty-five years. I don't know what it was in nineteen ninety-eight. I didn't dig into the books that far. But tonight, if this passes, your meetings moving forward will start at six PM on the first and third Monday.
You know, we used to have the Wayne Rule. We should call this the Alex Rule, I think.
I'm not voting against it.
No, got my no vote for the night.
You could vote against Alex. It wasn't me.
Yeah, you could.
Anybody from the public? I don't see any. All right, your vote, please. And that's eight to zero. And just an FYI, it starts in April. So the next meeting will be at six PM.
We'll send you a reminder.
Thank you.
All right. Ordinance, next was an ordinance vacating the following described real property, Lot One, Lincoln School addition to the city of Beatrice, Gage County, Nebraska.
I move that said ordinance be given number twenty-five dash six. The title thereof be approved, the rules be suspended, and the said ordinance be read by number only three times tonight.
And I'll remember. A motion to suspend the rule is not.
Second.
Oh, that's right. See?
Second.
All right, how about now? A motion to suspend the rules is not debatable. Okay. Ordinance number twenty-five dash six by number only the first time, twenty-five dash six the second, and twenty-five dash third, the third and final time.
I move that ordinance number twenty-five dash six be passed and approved.
Second.
So twenty-five dash six and twenty-five dash seven go together. This is the replating of the Lincoln School site. And so the first step is always to vacate the existing plat, which you see is Lincoln School addition. And then the next twenty-five dash seven, what it will do is lay down or adopt the new plat, which is Heritage Heights Edition. The pictures haven't changed from what you've seen in the past. The lot layout's still the same. So nothing of that has changed. We just updated the names to Heritage Heights.
They were at the school, Lincoln School site today. There were at least eight cars there, doors open.
They're working.
They're working.
Any discussion? Your vote, please. And that passes eight to zero. Move on to ordinance number C, ordinance approving the plat of Heritage Heights addition to the city of Beatrice, Gage County, Nebraska.
I move that said ordinance be given number twenty-five dash seven. The title thereof be approved, the rules be suspended, and the said ordinance be read by number only three times tonight.
Second.
A motion to suspend the rules is not debatable. Passes eight to zero. Ordinance number twenty-five dash seven by number only the first time, twenty-five dash seven the second time, and twenty-five dash seven the third and final time.
I move that ordinance number twenty-five dash seven be passed and approved.
Second.
So again, as we indicated, this is Heritage Heights Edition now. The lot layout hasn't changed. What you'll notice, though, is the main road through the development is known as Hamilton Lane. You have Liberty Circle, which then goes up to the north for that cul-de-sac. And you have North Twentieth Street that continues in from the existing residential neighborhood to the south.
Any discussion needed? If not, your vote, please. And that passes eight to zero. Now we have an ordinance vacating the following described real property, Lot One, Paddock Lane Elementary School addition to the city of Beatrice, Gage County, Nebraska.
I move that said ordinance be given number twenty-five dash eight. The title thereof be approved, the rules be suspended, and the said ordinance be read by number only three times tonight.
Second.
A motion to suspend the rules is not debatable. That passes eight to zero. Ordinance number twenty-five dash eight by number only the first time, twenty-five dash eight the second, and twenty-five dash eight the third and final time.
I move that ordinance number twenty-five dash eight be passed and approved.
Second.
Similar to your last one, but this deals with Paddock Lane Elementary School site. And so again, we're vacating what was there now, which is Paddock Lane Elementary School addition, right? Pretty, pretty creative. And putting down what we're going to know as Corral Crossings Edition.
Your vote, please. And twenty-five dash eight passes eight to zero. Ordinance approving the plat for Corral Crossing addition to the city of Beatrice, Gage County, Nebraska.
I move that said ordinance be given number dash twenty-five dash nine. The title thereof be approved, the rules be suspended, and the said ordinance be read by number only three times tonight.
Second.
A motion to suspend the rules is not debatable. Passes eight to zero. Ordinance number twenty-five dash nine by number only the first time, twenty-five dash nine the second, and twenty-five dash nine the third and final time.
I move that ordinance number twenty-five dash nine be passed and approved.
Second.
So Paddock usually has to do with horses, how you got two corral crossings. Anybody wants to know the connection? And that's why you end up with Wagon Circle and Lariat Circle as your two cul-de-sacs. The north-south road through there is just an extension of Fifteenth Street, so it just gets no fancy name. And Irving Street is an extension in from the east, so we named it Irving Street rather than come up with new names. So again, the site layout, those types of things have not changed, but we'll from now on know it as Corral Crossing.
Any discussion? And your vote, please. That passes eight to zero. And we have an ordinance authorizing the issuance of the city of Beatrice, Nebraska of its combined utilities revenue bonds, series two thousand twenty-five, an aggregate principal amount not to exceed seven hundred thousand dollars as recommended by the Airport Advisory Board.
I move that said ordinance be given number twenty-five dash ten. The title thereof be approved, the rules be suspended, and the said ordinance be read by number three times tonight.
Second.
A motion to suspend the rules is not debatable. And that passes eight zero. Now we have ordinance number twenty-five dash ten by number only the first time, twenty-five dash ten the second, and twenty-five dash ten the third and final time.
I move that ordinance number twenty-five dash ten be passed and approved.
Second.
So first off, this is not a combined utilities revenue bond, right? That's the typo on our part. What it would be is obviously an airport revenue bond. I think that's what's called in the bond documents. So if everybody remembers, we have about ten million dollars in projects occurring out at the airport between the taxiway and the hangar they're being completed. The city's share of those two projects is about six hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars in total. So we're looking to issue bonds. They'll use airport revenue, which, to be honest, is not enough to service the debt. And so you'll fall back to the GEO bonds or general obligation bonds for the city of Beatrice. Right now, we're looking at about ten-year bond issuance for these. You're going to be somewhere about a penny on your levy for this particular bond issuance. Preliminary, we're looking at three point eight to four and a quarter percent interest rates is what we kind of saw, but those were a month ago. Once you guys pass this, we'll continue to work with Jay Spearman for the issuance of these bonds here in the near future.
Discussion. Seeing none, your vote, please. And twenty-five ten passes eight to zero. Public forum. The purpose of public forum is for the presentation of an item by the general public to the city council for consideration at a later date. No discussion or action will be taken by the council at this time. Anybody here? Okay. We're going to move on to discussions and reports. Before we get into Tobias's report, I think I want to say thank you to being progressive to this council as we look at the new Corral Crossing and Heritage Heights lots. All of those add housing. And if we want to hit goals of thirteen to fifteen thousand dollars, we have to have housing. And so that foresight and that planning is well worth that step. And again, secondly, passing the bond for the airport, to out town of twelve thousand five hundred has a great asset. And when you can spend seven hundred thousand dollars to get on a ten million dollar project, you really got a blue light special. And so I think, some people have to be old, old, old enough to understand that, don't they? So anyway, that's just my little spiel before we move into the city administrator's monthly report.
Yeah, I was going to update you on a couple of projects that are going on. So the Lincoln's School and Paddock School demolitions. As, as Ted indicated, a lot of work's been going on. Started at Lincoln School, so the asbestos has been removed from Lincoln School. So those guys will now move over to Paddock and start asbestos removal there. So the next thing you'll see at Lincoln School site will be the utility guys coming in and shutting off utilities. So gas, I think, has already been in there. The electric department will be in, remove transformers and primary extensions, that kind of stuff. You'll see those things get taken off the site. And then police and fire will go through there and train, is what they tell me. I think they're just having fun. But they'll have their way with the building for a while and do some training there. And right now, we're scheduled for demo to start by March thirty-first. All indications are, should start sooner than that, but our contract says March thirty-first. And then obviously, we'll do the same thing at Paddock as we work over to that building. The CAS initiative, I don't want you to think has gotten forgotten. NJO T's ready, JEO's ready. They've scoped the project. They're ready to sign their contracts. Everybody's still on hold waiting for Federal Highway to sign a contract and send it back to us. So three hundred and thirty days is the average. We're still under that. So we just have to continue to be patient. And then the Aquatic Park Master Plan. Today, the RFPs or RFQs were due, and so we got four proposals back. The committee's got those. They'll start doing a little reading and a little researching, and then hopefully come back in April with a recommendation for this body to select a consultant to work with as we look forward to putting together that master plan.
Second, second week in April.
Second week in April?
The second meeting in April. Second meeting in April.
We got it.
Okay.
Just one, one comment. Maybe you were going to do it, Bob. I'm sorry. I noticed towards the end of that that Steve Bergmeyer is retiring in a couple of weeks after, my memory serves me right, thirty-seven years, was it?
It's somewhere in there.
Thirty-seven years with the airport, so thank him for everything he did and wish him well in his retirement. That's a long time. We're losing a lot of experience here lately. We really are, so.
Time does march on. Okay, we are going to go into executive session tonight.
I move the city of Beatrice going to close session at eight thirty-one PM for the protection of public interest to discuss real estate.
Second.
Your vote, please. That passes eight to zero.